I think we'll get started. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council Workshop to order. Will the clerk pick the role, please?
Sorry, I didn't realize I'd muted myself. Becken?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson? Trustor?
Here.
And Verplank, I don't see it, but she said she'd be late.
All right, then we'll proceed. First of all, do any of the council members wish to propose agenda changes? All right, hearing done, we'll move to the public comment segment. Members of the audience can make a comment. They are limited, please, to three minutes. If you wish to comment, select unmute mic in your Zoom interface and speak your name and where you reside. And if you're on a phone and you wish to be recognized, press star six. So is anybody wishing to make a comment?
Gary Medler.
Lauren Flanagan.
Right. Lauren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I watched all the League of Women videos. And thank you for all who participated. And I noted in a couple of comments by you, Ken and Barry. Rep, you didn't name me, but you referred to some of the comments that I've made in these prior meetings.
Lauren, excuse me, at this point in the meeting, would you limit your comments to agenda items?
Well, you attacked me in your video and I'd like to respond.
That's inappropriate at this point. You can comment on any agenda item you wish. There's a public comment period on any issue after the discussion items. So do you wish to comment on an agenda item?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Don't keep attacking me on your videos and calling me an outsider.
That's out of order, Lauren. Let the record show that Jane has joined us.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the council for taking the time and the effort to get information regarding the options on Park Street. I've read them over several times. I've talked to several council members regarding it. And I can't make a recommendation. I'm not an engineer. But I do want whatever is going to make a 75-year-old woman safe in walking along that street. I've done it all my life. I would like to continue as long as my knees will carry me. And I would like to say, and this is something I mentioned to Chris earlier in the afternoon. It makes sense to have a walking path on the west side. Because you should always, as I was taught, as a Brownie and a Girl Scout, you should walk facing the traffic coming towards you. Again, I thank the council. I hope that something can be done in the near future. Interest rates are very low. Municipal bonds are a possibility. And I hope this will be a top priority for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. We'll do our best. Anyone else wish to make a comment on agenda items?
Yes, Gary Medler.
Could you please tell us where you reside?
461 Vine Street, Sagatuck.
Thank you.
Item 5E. I'm inquiring as to whether you received my correspondence today and whether all of the council members have read it.
We did receive your correspondence. Anybody on the council did not receive it? We should be good.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? Dan Fox?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to keep this brief. I know you've got a big agenda today. I wanted to speak for just a bit in response in regard to item 5F, as in Frank. In the short memo that updated you or set the discussion item in place, the acting city manager referenced the timetable on the non-motorized trail tri-community committee studying that. In her comment, she mentioned that the committee had met, and we all remember how important it was to have the non-motorized trail addressed by a tri-community committee, met only once last, I'm not sure when the committee was authorized, but it met only once first part of last year. And then in the note, Ms. Holman mentions that COVID slammed with the implication, at least I took it, that COVID somehow presented, prevented the community or the tri-community commission from meeting again. And in any case, it did not meet from April all the way to July when the commission for that group expired, when the council moved for that group expired. I have no idea why that happened. I don't know if it was inattention, I don't know if it was incompetence. I don't really care. But before you reactivate that group, I would ask that you consider appointing someone to run the group, understands how they work, and understands that it's the head of the committee's responsibility to call the meetings. The reality was, after April, not only did the council meet by Zoom, virtually every other commission and committee authorized by the council planning commission, I know for a fact because I'm on it, fire board, I know for a fact because I've been in all those meetings, continued to meet by Zoom. Apparently, the only committee that couldn't find a way to meet by Zoom was the tri-community planning, real planning commission, committee, whatever. That failure, I don't know, maybe it doesn't mean much to some people. It means a great deal to me. And I think it means a great deal to the council because it reflects very poorly on this council. Worse, the council and the city have long been accused of turning a deaf ear to the trail issues regarding safety on the trail and whatever. And here, you create a committee, you create a commission that's supposed to have that as its primary charge. And nothing happens. One meeting, and then we sleep through the rest of the time and the committee goes out of existence. And here we are, going on almost a year later, nothing to show for it. I don't think that's acceptable. Thanks for listening. As they say on TV, hang up and wait for my reply. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment? I see none. One more call. Anyone else wish to make a comment on agenda items? Okay, then we will proceed to our discussion items. We have a jam-packed agenda, so I'll try to keep the meeting moving along. And hopefully, we can work through these in a reasonable period of time. The first item is the city manager executive search firms. A chance for us to meet the personnel of the firms and they can make a brief presentation. I think we asked them to limit their presentation to five minutes, and then we'll open it up to questions from council members. So first on our agenda is the Walsh Consulting. Mr. Walsh, are you on?
I am. All right, you ready?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity before you this afternoon. Means a great deal to me to be considered. Instead of giving a glossy five-minute overview, and I will take up less than five minutes, I just wanted to have a simple conversation for us to get to know each other. I know you have my 30-page proposal. You've had it for a while now. Instead of putting that up in a PowerPoint, I just wanted to have a conversation with you. Our firm's built on communication and trust. That's really all we have. And we've been doing this since 1997. We were honored to be able to do the Dougal search back in 2010. And then we're asked to come back in 2019 to do a second search. And we also, of course, conducted the search for Sagatuck Township last year. And I think both Rich and Griffin have been great additions to your community over there in Sagatuck. Talking about the process, our process starts with putting together a community profile. We have to be able to list all the amenities and the great things about Sagatuck to be able to attract candidates. Recruiting in Michigan right now is not the easiest thing to do. So we start out with the interviews of elected officials, staff, and key stakeholders. Those stakeholders, the names of those come from the council. We knew all of them, and we put together a proposal, and we're really searching for the right fit. It isn't just who has the best education or who's been a manager the longest. It's what have we learned about Sagatuck in the proposal? And what is the right fit for the community? And that really comes from the city council. We would publish that profile to start attracting candidates around October 9th with a deadline of November 6th. And again, these dates are tentative, but I wouldn't give the council kind of an outline of moving forward. Once we publish that in the International City Managers Association, MML, LinkedIn, and several other social media sites, Facebook and many others, we also conduct candidate questionnaires. We send questionnaires out to the top candidates. We also check their social media sites. And in addition to that, the candidate questionnaires are another piece of information for the council to vet the top candidates. And then there is a question about their background and other things. So the council can glean as much information as possible. I also conduct preliminary phone interviews with the top candidates. We put all that information together and bring it to the council. And that would be around November 12th to the 19th, and when we meet with the council to vet the top candidates. From there, there would be public interviews around December 12th. And then following that, the council would have a choice of having second interviews, bringing candidates back, or potentially making an offer to a candidate. And there's still a lot of work to do at this time because you have the background check, comprehensive background check, and you have contractual negotiations. Those things can take a lot of time. Our firm handles A to Z. We handle from the moment you hire us to the moment the contract's done and you approve that at a December council meeting. Target date right now, roughly, if everything goes smoothly, would be approximately for a new manager would be around the first of January to January 10th, 11th, somewhere in there would be the first day in office. So those are the steps that we would go through, all the way from a profile, all the way to the hiring date. And there's a lot of steps in between reference checks and all of that. In closing, our firm's really built on three things, and that's open, transparent communication. We're apolitical. We're across-the-board communication to all elected officials. There's no surprises. We also are committed to diversity. We're really pleased that two of our last four or five searches have resulted in women leading local governments. And these weren't just managers before. These were people who were ladies who were department heads who we went out and sought to bring into the profession. And finally, an unbridled trust and professionalism. We hope that we're not just trying to help you find a manager. Walsh Municipal Services is wanting to build a trusted relationship with the Sagatuck City Council going forward. In closing, you have three great firms to choose from. I hope that we can earn your trust and respect. And if you select us, we will work very, very hard and will be built on trust, communication, and transparency. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any council members have questions or comments? Hearing, hearing done.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Mr. Walsh, just thanks so much for sending your information. Can you remind me, are you involved in some searches right now? As far as, I'm curious really what your schedule's like, if you're involved in the other searches with cities.
Yeah, that's a good question. We just finished, we had four going on at one time this summer. And right now, I have one ongoing search and the interview started today. So it's just about completed. I have no other searches on the horizon. And that search, councilwoman, is for the city of Saline.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you again, Mr. Walsh. Next, we'll hear from Michigan Municipal League. Are you on?
I am. Thank you so much. I'm Kathy Grinzinger. I'm the lead executive recruiter for the, or the lead executive facilitator for the Michigan Municipal League. I've been in local government for 35 years and have been with the league since February of 2014, finished my local government last assignment as the city manager in Mount Pleasant. And I want to thank you very much for inviting us to talk with you this evening. Certainly, the council members, the residents, and the employees of Sagatuck deserve and will benefit from the kind of in-depth level of scrutiny you're giving this task, which is certainly going to be one of the most important things you do as a council on the time you were seated. From us already, you've gotten our informational brochure. You've gotten a very detailed proposal. In the last day or two days, you've gotten a handout of a PowerPoint presentation that if I felt you really wanted to sit through it, we would use. But what I'd like to do this evening is talk to you about what separates the league from the other two firms that you are going to be talking with this evening. And I think sometimes when you have all this information sitting in front of you, it just gets so overwhelming that I would suggest, as a former city manager, one of the easiest things to do is take a look at this proposal in the same way you'd measure any group of proposals from an engineering firm or a special planning firm and sort of go through that matrix, that, you know, five, 10-step checkoff that you would do when you're analyzing any other requests for services. And the first thing you do is start out by reviewing the company, its history and its qualifications. Well, you know the league and we know you. We've been your trusted partner for years. We've served as your human resources consultant and completed three wage and compensation studies for Sagatuck in the recent past, where you're advocate, where you're lobbyist, where you're go-to resource for policy options, state and federal legislation, municipal law, finance, and any other manner of topics that may pass your desks and your agendas. Secondly, we're highly experienced. We've been assisting Michigan villages and cities and counties for over 20 years. In the last four and a half years, we've done over 50 searches. Our knowledge base is deeper than any other firm. We have in-house legal expertise that's devoted to the Michigan laws, the Open Meetings Act, the Freedom of Information Act. We have a unique access to all the municipal professional associations in the state of Michigan, not just the city managers and assistant city managers. But we assist and work with the Finance Officers Association, the Clerks Association. We train Michigan Treasurers and work with Michigan certified municipal planners. And finally, we are tied up inextricably with you. Our job is not just to find a city manager for you, put a butt in the chair this time. Our job is to work with you well, excuse me, into the future to assure that Sagatuck stays unique and prosperous through whatever administrator you choose. We're not going anywhere. In the second part of your analysis, you would look at the project leader and the team members. If you choose to work with us, you'll be working with Jerry Richards. Jerry's been doing executive searches for six years. Prior to that, he's a highly respected village, city, and township manager. He's uniquely qualified, we think, to work in Sagatuck because of his leadership in highly educated communities with diverse populations. And he's been a city manager of a Lake Michigan shoreline community with those competing demands. In addition to Mr. Richards, you're going to have access to a larger project team, including the league's Human Resources Department, the in-house legal counsel, our social media group, our outreach and marketing specialists, and the other four facilitators who could step in and help if you need us. The next thing you talk about when you're analyzing a request for services methodology and project management. Now, each of us is going to be telling you that we adopt and engage in the best practices of recruitment and selection industry. And consequently, frankly, a lot of the things we do look pretty similar. But within this sector, we can point to some unique talents that we bring to the table as well. We have exclusive access to our members' salary data. And as part of our proposal, we're going to provide you with a review of wages from comparable communities. You can make sure that when you go out to recruit, you're already competitive in the market. Our profiling process is based on a consensus-building brainstorming exercise, and we work with each group. We don't do individual interviews. We don't have you fill out questionnaires or take homework. We do, we try to find consensus in real time because we found that getting to a group agreement around all the prop profile issues and techniques assures us that everything we do from that point on, we're doing from a concrete foundation. And we have found in our follow-up surveys and improvement methodologies that the consensus-building exercise is a valuable piece of council's ability to work together in and of itself. We also invest significantly, significantly in finding that cultural match and the fit in the corporate culture. To that end, we do most of our reference checking at the very early stage in the screening process while we're vetting applicants to bring you potential shortlists to interview. We also do all of our online media and our social media search on potential candidates at that early stage as well. So by the time we're bringing you a shortlist, we've already gleaned and vetted out some other things that might be difficult to find later. You're also going to look at pricing. Well, ours is what it is. There are no add-ons. There's no reimbursement. There's no figuring mileage or copying. The proposal that we're recommending to you that includes the profiling with council and with staff is $17,000. And finally, we offer you a guarantee. If the selected incumbent voluntarily vacates the position within a year following placement, we'll repeat the search for you with direct advertising being the only cost to the community. I think we gave you in the proposal some idea about timing. So I would be welcome to answer any questions you might have for me.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Chris?
Thank you. Could you just refresh for me your timing?
What we look at is 120 days from the day we first meet to do the profiling. Now, we can generally meet the expectations and get you to a point where you know exactly who you're hiring in less time than that. But we've found that it's better to under-process, under-promise, and over-deliver. You should have a person in the chair regardless by the first of the year or in that first month of January. And we'd like you to look at that 120 days, knowing that it's very difficult to get councils together for long meetings through that holiday season, through that November to December time. So we've baked a little bit more time into our process.
Any other questions?
Yes. Hi, Kathy. Same question that I had for Frank. So Jerry Richards would be the main point person leading for you all. Is that correct? I got that name. And so my question would be as well, what other projects similar to this would be he be involved with currently?
Right now, everybody but Mr. Richards is involved in a search. We have a few proposals pending, but if you select us and Mr. Richards, you're going to be working with him exclusively, at least at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing done. We'll move on to Amy Sell. Are you there?
I am. Thank you so much. And I do have a brief presentation, just to hit on a few points. If I could share, I will go ahead and share my screen, if that's all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Great. And first of all, just very humbled to be here amongst the company of so many amazing leaders in in the process. Let's see, let me grab this. All right, and it doesn't.
Erin, do you need to adjust anything?
Say, do you want me to share your presentation?
I think if you could maybe stop sharing.
Yeah, I think only one can do it at a time. So Erin, you shut off your share screen.
Thanks.
That consensus that is so important that was mentioned. So we get a consensed target of what we're looking for as well as that job description and that engagement of the community is so important. And all those different stakeholders and department leaders as well. The next thing we really focus on is we are very aggressive with our network and outreach. I have over 13,000 LinkedIn connections. We have a large database of diverse municipal talent that we've built up over the years. I remember one, and we really go after those passive candidates as well. So I just finished up the city manager search in Ann Arbor. And one of the candidates there from Sandusky, Ohio, kind of mentioned, and it was in the paper. He's like, he wasn't looking for the opportunity, but he was connected and a recruiter convinced him to join. Sandusky actually had a rally to keep them in place because they were, you know, it was such a high-quality candidate. So we really look at the quality of candidates that we're looking out and with a huge focus again on diversity. We really use technology. So my little glitch with screen sharing aside, we found out within Zoom, we've had to really rely on technology. So again, using just the Ann Arbor search that we completed, we did initial interviews with Zoom. We had a three-way round robin where three people on my team were conducting simultaneous Zoom interviews with four finalists to have with a community panel, a staff panel, and with council. And then for second rounds, when we brought them back, we had them record a presentation and Q and A with questions sourced from the community, as well as they did a town hall with staff. As well as we did kind of, since we couldn't do community meet and greets like we like to do, we had small group facilitated discussions with community members to really enable a lot of input and thoroughness in that search using technology. to really enable a lot of input and thoroughness in that search using technology. Also, the candidate packet that we will be providing to you will include many of the items that have already been mentioned. We do phone screens, we do surveys, we do background checks and reference checks ahead of time before we ever present candidates to you. We also use Spark Hire and provide a video of the candidates asking a variety of questions. So you will get to see this video and a tremendous amount of information before you decide to move on to a finalist. And then afterwards, we'll continue to put together a customized process that will be best for you. And customer focus is really a hallmark of what we do. We will do anything to, just about anything that we can do to help our clients. In fact, recently, we are, we were awarded the contract to do the outsourced human resources for the city of Frazier. And then within a month, they actually need, they appointed me as the acting city manager because they were so comfortable in the work that we did while we were in the process of getting them an interim city manager. So we really love to partner with our clients as much as we can. I want to touch on a little bit, and I won't go into this as much in detail because of the time, but we really have a nice track record of qualified diverse applicants that we bring into the pool, such as the city manager for Howland. We had a diverse candidate, a very diverse candidate pool in terms of females and people of color. Madison Heights selected a female, Max Transit Authority selected a female, Redford Township selected a female, and St. Clair Shores, we had a nice pool that included people of color and females. Grand Rapids, they selected a person of color. And Ann Arbor, we had female and person of color finalists. And of course, you can't, I think it's, it's easiest to attract a diverse team when you have a diverse team. So this is the team that will be working with me. We have a team of 14 people. Many other members will be involved with posting and doing some of their activities. But this is the team that will be working with me on the search. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Kind of a follow-up on the last one. Can you give us your timeline? And the people that are working, I won't jump on, I won't rain on Garna's parade.
No, feel free, feel free.
Are they working on other projects too?
We do have people working on different projects. To jump the gun, if I can, we, we were just awarded the Lapeer County Administrator Search. So we do have that going on. We actually have a different manager focused on that and a different team as well. But these, we do, we estimate that a search will take 200 to 300 hours over 12 weeks. And so we do spread that out, but that still allows time for people to be working on additional assignments. But through, I actually teach a class in project management, and we have a pretty refined process. So we're highly efficient in how we approach things and always staff things accordingly. We have somebody on our team that really focuses on the staffing. Very good at timelines and hitting them. So we do kind of front load the search by identifying which dates of council meetings would work into the, the date to review candidates, the date to review the rubric and the job posting. We back into that. In terms of the timeline, it takes about three to four weeks to pull together the talent rubric and job posting. Then we would review that with council. After we have approval for that, we post the position and screen applicants for about five, about four weeks. And then we have about another week to pull together all the data and finish the reference checking and background checks. We provide it to, we provide it through a secure portal that council members can log into and review the video and all the documents. We give everybody about a week to review the candidates ahead of time before that meeting. Once the, but we also tell the candidates ahead of time when the dates are so that they kind of put them into their schedule if they're likely to be a finalist. So that about a week and a half after council selects the finalists, we put together the bios and the press release to get it out to the community, set together the community engagement points. Then the, so about two weeks after that. So the total process from beginning to end is between 10 to 12 weeks, depending again on where those city council meetings fall.
Thank you. Who would be the point person then?
I would be your point person.
Thank you.
Amy, are you working on any other searches actively at this time?
We are just kicking off Lapeer County, and I expect to be doing another surge kicking off in November. But I, I've done multiple searches and because we have a really good team and a home process, I'm very comfortable with the workload that we've scheduled out for everybody.
Any other questions? You're none, so thank you very much, Amy. Council, we have a kind of a difficult choice to ma- make. We have three really good candidates here, in my opinion. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris?
I have a question. First of all, I agree, the presentations and the depth of experience, as well as the different places that they've helped find city managers is, it makes it a tough decision. I do have a question for Mr. Walsh and Ms. Sell that the MML brought up about having a guarantee. I wonder if they could both address that. And then for Mr. Walsh, would the, the people that would you be involving would be, they be the same ones that did both the Douglas?
Yes, actually, to answer your question, we do provide the same guarantee that the league mentioned of one year that's in our proposal. And also, I would be, I conducted those searches that I mentioned before, and I would be conducting the search, I'd be one-on-one with you. I did the both searches at Douglas and the search for Sagittuck Township. I handled all of those myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Sell, we provide a one-year guarantee if the person leaves for whatever, for any reason.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mark?
Oh, no, Ken, I'm good. I guess, I guess I can state that I suppose that we'll have an action item on the agenda to pick one of these three firms Monday night, is that correct? At that time, we'd get into various discussions. I mean, as far as preference and that.
That would be the plan. I think we all would like to have the weekend to, to look over the materials and, and think about this.
Agreed, thanks.
Mr. Mayor? This is Garn. Actually, this is a question for all three. Are these searches generally, do you generally run them remotely? Or will you have plans to be in the community residing here, so to speak, so that you can be closer to the action? How's that?
Do you want to go first? Well, that's a twofold answer. What I typically, I would be conducting the search remotely, except for typically with every search, when I, when we get down to the, let's say, six or eight top candidates in the last week or so of the process. And typically, I've been doing this a long time. I'm pretty well-connected in the state, so I know candidates are going to rise to the top. I meet them in the community and kind of show them around a little bit and have a conversation just to get to know them better. So it's both remotely and it's in-house.
Okay, Kathy?
I'm going to tell you that the last several months have been quite interesting and have brought about a lot of creativity with, in the search business. Right now, most of our work is being done remotely, on Zoom, on video, on Skype, on FaceTime. We hope to be able to work through some other techniques as we get farther into the year and come up with different ways to bring candidates into communities and to involve community members in the process. We have to do that in conscious of the executive orders and everything that's happening in the different districts of the state. We just finished Howell, for instance. There were, the primary interviews were on Zoom, but we were able to arrange for limited and social distant meetings between the candidate, between the top candidates and council. So what I guess I would say to you is we will do our best to be as creative as possible and get you as much face-to-face time as we can do in your side of the state.
Thanks. Amy?
So definitely echo the issues already raised around Zoom and some changing things. But I do have to tell you that my team's already fighting over the opportunity to be in Sagittuck. And as someone who's vacationed there frequently and whose stepdaughter works at Chantel over this, over the summer, I will gladly be spending a lot of time in Sagittuck, whether there are candidates with me or not.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, I hear none. Garn, did you raise your hand or no?
No, I was just muting.
Okay. If there are no other questions, then the way we will proceed is to consider this over the weekend. I'm glad that this is recorded so that we can go back and look at the recordings if we wish. I think they were very good presentations. We thank you very much for taking the time to, to do this. And we'll, we'll be discussing this at our meeting on Monday. And you're obviously welcome to join us at that time as well. Okay, thank you, everybody. The next item on our discussion list is the Kalamazoo Harbor Eurasian Water Millfoil Infestation. We wanted to begin considering this because as in past years, we kind of let the consideration of how we are going to deal with the weed infestation on Lake Cal over the winter. It's clear that if we're going to take any action next spring, we need probably to get to work right away. If we decide that we're going to go the route of getting riparian permission to deal with the weeds in some manner or another, we need to begin working on that. If we decide to go the route of the taxing district idea that's been proposed, we need to get to work on forming, formulating that as well. If we went that route, we would not need to get permission from the riparian owners. So I just wanted to have a brief discussion here about the council's interest in moving ahead. We don't have to make a commitment at this point that we're actually going to do remediation. But I think we should have a commitment to go ahead with some of the preliminary steps. So we were prepared to do something in spring if we decide that we want to go that route. What are your thoughts? Chris?
Yes, I agree absolutely, we need to move forward on this. And I think working with Douglas, they did it. They have done a series of them this year, and we can be able to see how successful that was. But I think we definitely need to go forward, work with them. And I believe it was one of our last times we talked about this, Mark came up with the suggestion, and I hope I don't have this wrong, that we pay for it the first time. And if it's successful and not a waste, and then we have to continue it up, then we can look at doing the blanket on the word, assessment.
Okay, I should point out that Douglas did a treatment this year, and they were, they were pretty satisfied with it. And they contacted the company that they, that did the service. And the company said that if Sagittuck and Douglas were to do this at the same time, that there would be a discount of their fees. Also, I'd also mention that Mark kindly took us on, Barry and I, on a little boat trip to take a look at the weed situation. And we looked at Wade's Bayou as well as our side of the bridge. And it appears that if Douglas did the remediation where we think they did it, that it's pretty open water there. We didn't see a lot of evidence of millfoil, at least in some areas near their marinas. Also, you know, obviously, there's some grow back in other parts of Wade's Bayou, as it would be in Cal Lake. But it seems that Douglas felt they were, they were pretty successful. And when we eyeballed it, it appeared to be that way. I don't know, Barry or Mark, if you'd like to weigh in on that? Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, very instructional for me to get on the water. I'm a landlubber, don't own a boat. And it sure looks a whole lot different from out in the lake and goes from the shore. So I am in favor of moving forward. The funding mechanism, I'm sure we'll debate. More work to be done on that. But as far as the straw poll for me saying yes, let's move forward, I have my yes.
Okay. Holly?
Mayor, when we discussed this earlier, our professor that came to spoke, spoke to us, said that Dash was the best option. He talked about having the divers and also the ODC talked about that as well. And I think we were supposed to get some quotes for divers. And if we're going to look at herbicides, I think we should also consider what is another option.
I'd agree with that. There's, there's a lot of debate about which is the most effective option. We've heard from contractors on both sides of herbicides versus cutting the weeds and so on. That's, that's another thing I think we need to do over the winter is analyze the cost and benefit of the various ways that you can treat the weeds. Good point. Jane?
Could you tell us what Douglas did? Did they use herbicides? Did they cut the lawnmower system? How did, what did Douglas do?
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that they used the herbicide. Probably, I can't recall the name of the herbicide, but it was obviously approved one by the state and the EPA.
Yes, we've done around with approved herbicides in the past. So I'd be real interested. I'm, I see that the ODC is not real in favor of doing that. So I think this needs a look this winter.
Yep, those.
Mr. Mayor? Curious, with Douglas's approach, did they have to get any property owner's approval before administering that herbicide?
They did. And one property owner did not give their approval. And so they went around that, that area. They didn't apply the herbicide to the one who didn't give approval.
Okay. So as a, as a continuation to that, then, and I know you've said this, well, we'll have to get everybody's approval here in the Cal Lake, correct? And so if we have one person or a few, we just are going to kind of go around their properties?
If it's feasible to go around. I mean, if there were a whole number of non-approvals, then we'd have a problem on our hands.
And then lastly, if I may, is there any way that we can get Ben from the ODC end to kind of talk to us about what they are seeing as happening in other communities? I mean, he was very clear in his documentation that this is an upriver issue. I mean, we can treat it and it'll just come back because of the runoff from up the river. So I'm, I'm very curious what they might be doing in other communities that have similar problems.
Sure, I, I think we need to look at that. All of the contractors say you can't just apply one application and that's going to take care of you for the season. There are multiple applications involved. Douglas had two, I believe. And so I, I think we should get all of the contractors who we've contacted, who we've talked with in the past to give us presentations about what's, what the best approach to this would be.
And?
Mark?
I well, obviously, we should pursue this after, starting after the election. So we know exactly what council people are seated. And, and we can start originally, you know, initially with the riparian rights sign-off by property owners of large tracts of land or, say, condo associations. So there, that will limit the, that task. We have to determine where, where and when we're going to start the riparian rights acquisitions. We have to determine where and when we're going to start the riparian rights acquisitions. But there's no reason why we can't do several things at once during this project. If we start yet in 2020. Yeah, I think we should take a look at it and see how it goes. Douglas did do two treatments. I believe they totaled a little over $60,000. And they want to do, I think, expand it down river from what I've been told by Douglas councilperson. And are hoping that they can piggyback with Sagatuck as we do a proportion in Kalamazoo Lake, if we go in that direction. Yeah, I'm all in favor of going forward with this in a few weeks or a few months or whatever here, sooner rather than later.
Yep. Okay, well, I don't think there's any action that's required on this at a council meeting in the near future. But I think what we can do now is just go forward with the plan, bring it back at some point at a workshop, and talk about our approach to this on the timetable. So if that's okay with everybody, that's what we'll do. Now, Jane, I think you wanted to make a comment.
I was just curious about when you start dumping herbicides in the river, how you keep them from going on people's property that don't want herbicides on their property. And I guess I don't know how that's done. I find it kind of interesting that you just go around because do those little pellets or whatever they are know they're supposed to go around? I just, I'm in full agreement that we have to do something. But, you know, I think we have to respect people's rights as well.
Sure. You know, I was told that the pellets sink to the bottom pretty quickly and act on the weeds when they hit the bottom, that they're not suspended in the water. But that's something we need to ask the experts as well. Holly?
So in the ODC document, which I guess is from the fall, it says that they do not recommend herbicide because of currents. And you get something called off-target kill. So to Jane's point, the currents do take that herbicide.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move forward as proposed. The next item are pop-up patios. Cindy, can you take the lead on this? You're muted.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may have heard, there are some pop-up patios that wish to continue and take advantage of the MLCC extension of the liquor license through the end of November. I did send out a survey to all our pop-up patio permit holders. And I received answers back from three people. One was totally against it, wanted nothing, absolutely nothing to do with it in the November. And then two others responded favorably that they were the ones that were requesting that we extend our permits through the end of November. I did attach our original application and our amended application for November and would propose three things in it. You gave me a lot of leeway last time, and maybe you want to have more involvement this time. But that they would be lighted 24 hours a day because it gets dark a lot earlier. And that there not be any tents in the street. And just because of traffic and pedestrian visibility, it's hard enough to drive with all our pedestrians without tents blocking our view. And that at the forecast of plowable snow event, that everything be removed from the street so the snowplows can go through without damaging your furniture or the snowplow. And that we will attempt to notify them of a forecast of a snowfall. But it's their responsibility to monitor the weather as well. If the snowfall is coming on a Saturday, I can do some things from home, but not everything. And I don't have the same information at home that I have here. And I don't want to be driving in a plowable snowy fence anyway. So those were some of the things that I mentioned and that they would have to come and meet with me like they did the first time on a face-to-face conversation where we could talk about the expectations of what happens in a snowflow, a snowfall. And what happens if there's tables and chairs get plowed into a street end? Because the city cannot be liable for that. If they have to take it off the street, or it's going to be damaged either by the snowplow itself or the plowed snow that hits it and covers it and buries it under a snowbank. So those are my proposals.
Okay, what is the expiration date of the pop-up?
The current expiration date is October 31. And the new proposed expiration date would be November 30. To coincide with the liquor license that the LCC extended.
So if we go ahead and approve this, and two restaurants are interested, can we limit that number then and like have a cutoff? What if somebody comes back at you, you know, in three weeks and makes a request?
I don't really have a problem with issuing them on the last day. It would be just kind of a matter of getting them in to see me and so we could have a face-to-face conversation.
Counsel? Any questions? Chris?
Actually, I worked with both Guy from Uncommon Grounds and Christine. She's talked to several people on the council, as well as met with Cindy and Jane and I. I think it's well worth trying. I think that Cindy has hit all the spots. They have to be responsible for cleanup, for their own scooping. If there's anything that gets broken or anything, they're required to handle that. As she said, there's not that many that want to do it in November, just those two. But I think when March hits, if we have a couple of nice days, they're going to want to do it then. So for me, it's a dry run in a very limited capacity to see what issues could be shaken out before we go into next spring when it starts up again.
Anyone else?
A comment or a question for Cindy?
Mark?
Thank you. Cindy said that the current permits expire on October 31st. Note that that's a Saturday. Maybe some carryover to Sunday. I assume you're just going to let the people have a freebie on a Sunday? November 3rd.
Yeah, I don't think that Sunday I'll come down and tell people to remove their patios. I'm working enough hours as it is, so.
I just want to get that on the record, just so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn.
Hi, Garn.
I think this is great. Anything we can do to support our business and those that want to stay open and provide outdoor space is great. I know a lot of folks are really hesitant to go indoors, so it'll help their business. And I totally support it. Thanks, Cindy, for all your work.
I would also agree. I think the pop-up patios have been a great addition to town. And I commend Cindy and everyone for working with Guy and Christine. And I'm really happy with the solution. I think everybody's going to pitch in and do whatever needs to be done to make this happen, whether it's us or whether it's snow removal. From the owner's perspectives, we'll make it work. It's too important.
Anyone else? I agree that this has been a very successful strategy for us in helping the business community. And I'm all in favor of extending it myself. So unless there are other questions or concerns, we can have this put on the agenda for Monday with a resolution to approve the extension until November 30th. Okay, bye, everyone? Okay. Next item on the agenda is reactivating the tri-community non-motorized trail committee. Last year, we authorized by resolution a motorized, non-motorized trail committee that met once in February, as I recall. And that meeting actually, I thought, was quite successful in that we looked at some ideas for how we might, they might, the trail might satisfy city council's concerns about the intersection of Lake Street and Blue Star Highway. And so I was looking forward to moving on that. And then COVID came along, and we did not schedule any further meetings. The committee ran its course in July. It was supposed to prepare a report by July 1st. So it is not commissioned anymore. And I would like to recommission that and then propose to the township and Douglas that we reactivate it and keep on moving. That's the proposal on the table. Comments? Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. I'd like to see the committee reactivated. It's regrettable that there wasn't any follow-through. But it says the hot-button issue is the biggest thing to hit town last year before the COVID virus. But it's, the bike trail is still something I'm committed to. And I have my opinions about what's safe and how we should do it, but I am committed to doing it. So please reactivate.
Sure. I think somewhere out there, there's a solution not far away that would satisfy us. So I'd really like to go ahead. Anyone else?
And I would, I would like to propose that we reactivate and that you and I continue on.
Thank you. I'm willing to do that. Anyone else? Chris?
I agree. Let's move on it.
Then what we will do is tailor this resolution that we used last time, put it on our agenda on Monday, and then move that. If it passes, then we'll move it forward to the township and Douglas for their consideration. Everybody okay with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next is the follow-up regarding Lake Michigan frontage obstacles. Who has, who can introduce this? Barry, I think we're taking the lead in introducing that for us.
Okay, I'll give it my best shot. I'm not a lawyer. Our law firm, Sluggett, and, you know, Jeff Sluggett has addressed this. And Cliff Bloom given us some guidelines. We recently received a correspondence that I have not had a chance to delve into from another community member. But, you know, my concern and some of our constituents that have contacted me are very concerned about the situation on the lake where there are boulders that are in the water and makes very unsafe situation for beach walkers. And, you know, I don't know, and this is me speaking now, not the lawyers, but they gave us an option to do a resolution or a letter to the administrative judge, just asking him to please review the applications out there. We didn't want to get in a fight. We don't want to create a big lawsuit. But, you know, some of our citizens are concerned. And so I'm responding to their concerns as their advocate. And I don't know where we're going to go. Again, I have not read the communication from somebody else in the community. But I can assert my opinion of what we should do on that. But if we move that forward, I guess I'm just asking, this is just me, asking for a letter or a resolution saying, please, look at the application. Just review the application and either approve it or not.
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn. If I may, I thought this, the documentation that we received in this packet from Cliff Bloom finally gave us a little more direction. On the back page, which would be page 80 in our packet, the city could still adopt a formal resolution urging the administrative law judge in that case to reverse Eagle's decision or to at least make Eagle perform its due diligence. And I think of all the things that Mr. Bloom cited, that makes the most sense and is probably the most expedient thing to do as it looks like we've already, as he says, it's too late for the city to file its own appeal or contest a case proceedings. And either way, it would be a mini litigation and quite costly. So I think it's very clear that probably our only solution is a formal resolution. And I would suggest that to make Eagle perform its due diligence.
I could support that as well. Other comments, questions? Chris?
Yes, I agree with Garnet and based upon what Mr. Bloom wrote. I also think we need to take another look at what Mr. Medler has sent us because I learned when we worked on the dunes and the Presbyterian camp that you need to pay attention when he has something. So I would suggest we look into what we do with his questions, too.
Anyone else?
Dan?
Yes?
Yeah, I can support doing a resolution as Garnet suggested. In addition, I did have a chance to at least look at Gary Medler's letter a little bit. I would suggest that we follow up by sending Mr. Medler's letter to our city attorney for comment. There's some legal background that's going to have to be done. How the current, the past lawsuit is affected by the recent decisions by Eagle regarding permitting along the lake, whether that supersedes any prior contracts or zoning ordinances or anything like that. So I think that that should be done. I don't know if we can just send it now or we have to have formal action. I'll leave that up to Karen to guide us on, our interim city manager. But those are my comments regarding the issue. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Holly? Then Jane?
I am concerned that we're two, three legal opinions in, and we're still debating the issue of standing. I'm not, I'm not clear based on what our attorney has shared with us that we have standing. I'm curious about that. And I also would question whether the city manager has followed up with Eagle just as a matter of due diligence to find out if all of the permits in that area are up to date. That seems like a place to start. So those are just my two comments.
I agree. We certainly can follow up with Eagle and try to ascertain what their process was. And also agree whether that permitting process really supersedes our requirements. I think we definitely have to consider Mr. Medler's contentions here. So I think where we're going is to refer that to our attorney. The question of our, related to Mr. Medler's comments here, as well as whether or not we actually need a resolution to move forward with such a letter requesting that the judge take a look at this stuff. Barry? You're muted.
I was hearing a consensus for a resolution on Monday at our meeting. And all this background work can continue to be done. But, you know, time's a wastin'. And this, whether we have standing or not, the judge will decide that. But a resolution from this council supporting the request for investigation on the permit, I think we should move on that. And I think I heard a consensus for that.
I think so. Jane, you were up to comment?
I just wanted to tell Mr. Medler I did not, I've searched through my emails. I did not receive his letter. And my email address is on the city website. And my email address is on the city website.
Okay, we'll get that to you. Mark, were you raising your hand?
I'm good. Sorry. Wild hands going tonight.
All right, anyone else? So we'll, yeah. Oh, Mr. Meddler, this is a council deliberation. You could come and make some more comments later on in, on the agenda if you don't mind.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. All right then, I think the consensus is we'll prepare a resolution for consideration at Monday's council meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Correct?
Yeah, I remember getting something from our city manager that said that there was time of the essence and suggesting a special meeting. So if we find out that has to happen to get it in before a certain time, we need to know that right away.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can pass a resolution on Monday. That's
Yep.
Ken, can I make one more comment? Please?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, thanks. In taking a look at Karen Doyle's overview regarding this topic, page 78 in today's agenda. Item two, she, she mentioned that she can prepare a resolution regarding asking Eagle to reverse their decision. And I just think we need to make sure that that's not the intent. The intent was to make sure that they did their due diligence in reviewing the permits.
I think that's the consensus here?
Yes.
So who's ever going to go to the next step? I just hope that that's conveyed to the city manager.
It will be. Jane?
Just to use Mr. Meddler's mind, I just received the email. So I have it.
Okay. Any other comments on this issue? We will move to the Park Street Non-Motorized Study update that has been breathlessly awaited. John, can you walk us through your presentation?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and Aaron, if you'd stop sharing your screen again, I, I'm going to double up on our PowerPoints tonight. Give it a shot. I'm getting a warning that the host has disabled screen sharing. I'm not sure if you're able to undo that.
That's not what I intended. Hang on.
In the meantime, let me just say that, yeah, we've, we've been working on this for the past month to two months. Obviously, it's an important infrastructure study for the community. I'm going to try to be brief and hit the highlights of the study because I know you all have the full study. But feel free at any time to stop me, flag me down as much as the, the technology allows. You won't hurt my feelings at all to do that. Oh, here we go. So let's go on. All right. So again, we're, we're calling this an update because back in 2005, we, we did study the corridor in pretty good detail. The agenda tonight follows basically the, the study itself and, and the titles all match the headings of that study with the exception of I've got a bullet down at the bottom for additional questions and discussion. And again, I'm calling that additional questions and discussion. If you want to chime in at any point, please, please don't be shy. This is meant to be more of a discussion since you all have the, the full study already. Background, Park Street, we're looking at the section between Campbell and Perriman. That section, the width is, is narrow. It's a narrow corridor limited by the topography. The development of the area, it's, it's 18 feet at its narrowest where you really just have two nine-foot drive lanes with, with little or no shoulder, at least not from what we can tell. And, and the shoulders, where you do have decent shoulders, they're roughly two feet wide. So that's, that's where we get our 18 to 22 feet. With that narrow corridor, we definitely have a pretty high traffic volume for something, you know, that is as narrow as it is just because that is the one and only route to Oval Beach. So average daily traffic there, you know, on the order of 2,000 vehicles per day is, is a pretty fair amount of traffic for, for that type of a corridor. It's signed for a 25 mile an hour speed limit. The 85th percentile speed, which is important because that's the speed that you would normally set as your speed limit is 30 miles an hour. The 85th percentile just means that, you know, of, of 100 drivers, 85 of them are driving at 30 miles an hour or less. So you've got 15 that are exceeding 30 miles an hour. We, we do have the, the option to keep it at 25 miles an hour, which, which I think is, is obvious. Just based on the topography and the limited sight distance and obstacles and things like that. So we're, we're not violating any law by keeping it where it is. Back to the 2005 study, what that looked at was primarily options targeting some outside funding. The, the one option that was looked at in the study was an eight-foot pathway on, on one side. The study kind of focused on the west side of the street. I just make the note there that in today's world, a full 14-foot pathway, 10-foot wide path plus two-foot shoulders is, is required for Ashto and, and the funding that's associated with Ashto. Projecting the costs from that study forward, just based on inflation and other factors, we're coming up with somewhere on the order of $2.5 to $3 million to build a fully compliant Ashto trail through this corridor. So obviously a very pricey project. And, and four-foot bike lanes was the other concept that was looked at in that study. And that again, projecting forward somewhere on the order of a million, $2 million and a half dollars to, to widen out what we have for shoulders and make those full compliant bike lanes. So given, given the costs involved, kind of as we approached the study and talking with Kirkus, and we were looking at what, what we would do today, we kind of focused on non-Ashto compliant versions, scaled back versions of those. And, and we kind of came up with a hybrid version that, that hopefully takes some of the best of both worlds. And that's what I'll be presenting tonight. The existing road looks something like this. Conceptually, this is straight out of the report as well. You see nine-foot lanes. You do have paved shoulders in some areas, in some areas not. And then that existing slope, you have areas on both sides of the road that are both up and down. So it's, it's highly variable as we, as we navigate that quarter. So in terms of the options, we looked at, the first one was a separate five-foot sidewalk. Again, the, the scaled back version of that eight-foot pathway that was looked at previously. Again, we focused on the west side of the street. The east side is, is just as viable and comparable in cost. The number of obstacles to get through are pretty similar. We focused on a, a minimum of three-foot separation, gave us a little bit of flexibility. The Ashto would require five for a sidewalk like this. Either that or a, a solid barrier. I don't love the idea of a solid barrier because you do have people that are going to want to cross the street to get to this facility. Estimated project cost for this would be on the order of $1.7 million. Again, we, we round a lot at this stage. Just the study stage that would obviously get refined as we went along in the design process. The advantages that we see for this, obviously it's a safety benefit. All three of the options I'm going to present tonight are a safety benefit. It's not really a, a concept where it's either safe or not. All of these are just safety improvements. It does retain the narrow width of the road. And we like that because when drivers get on a, on a nice wide road with wide shoulders, it does tend to increase their perception of safety and they will tend to speed up. So by having a separate facility, it does retain that narrow road width. And, and actually what we could do is even kind of standardize and, and keep it a little narrower than it is at the widest points if we had a separate facility for walkers and bikers. And then just the other point, and it may or may not be important to, to the decision makers, but it's a sidewalk would be consistent with other areas of the city. You have many streets that have sidewalk either on one side or both sides. So it's, it's something that, that ties in just from an aesthetic standpoint. Disadvantages, obviously cost. This is the most costly of the three options we looked at because it has the most conflicts involved and the most infrastructure to build. The other thing we noted, when we do look at putting in infrastructure, you have property owners on both sides of the street. This is going to tend to disproportionately affect those on, on whichever side we pick. And, and again, we focused on the west side, but that could be either side. The, the conceptual section for that looks something like this. We are illustrating a situation where you have the slope falling off. And again, you have that on both sides of the street. Retaining wall would be needed to create a flat space for that sidewalk. Again, you have a three to five-foot grassy area likely between the two that you could improve the grassy area further by installing guardrail. But again, you want to leave enough gaps to allow people to get back and forth to that sidewalk that, that live on the, on the east side, the opposite side of it. So that wouldn't be my recommendation because this is already such a big safety benefit. Just one thing to consider. Second option we looked at was widening the existing shoulders, taking that up to something closer to an Ashto compliant four-foot bike lane width. Basically, we, we looked at trying to add two feet all the way through the corridor. So taking it from those spots that are zero or close to zero, trying to get at least two feet and then improving where we can to try and get close to that four feet. This is closing in on a million dollars for this option. The advantages, less impact and it's spread to both sides of the road. And then lowest capital and maintenance cost because whereas, you know, you, you would have to shovel snow on a separate sidewalk, replace squares of sidewalk, things like this. The, the shoulder option is just contiguous asphalt. It's just asphalt from one side to the other. So it can be plowed with the road. It can be crack sealed with the road, things like that. The disadvantages, obviously you're, you're keeping people right against the, the travelers. The vehicles are right against the non-motorized. And then that concept of widening the pavement is, is going to tend to produce some higher speeds. That one would look something like this. We're, we're illustrating here a situation where we, we have a pretty good dune on one side and, and the gray drops off on the other side, just to kind of show you what that looks like. In certain areas, that pedestrian fence would become a guardrail if it's, if it's severe enough to warrant it. And then you need retaining walls to create a level space to, to widen out the, the existing roadway. And then the third one we looked at is, is a combination of the two essentially. Basically, it's a five-foot sidewalk, but giving a little more flexibility to go down to a full zero separation between the road and the sidewalk. And you do have one instance where that has already been built like this. It's on the, on the east side, on the riverside up near Perriman. You do have an area with some, with some docks that, that they, they built a sidewalk essentially along the side of the road. Advantages, the design flexibility is, is the biggest one. We can, we can tailor the design to the topography a little bit better. Which lets us, you know, attack the areas that we feel are the most sensitive and, and try and reduce cost in areas where it's a little easier to do what we want to do. Again, same, same concept with if we do this on one side of the street, it is going to tend to disproportionately impact one side. We can, we can balance that as we couple whatever we do on the non-motorized side with roadway improvements. We can actually use the flexibility of this option to even realign the road a little bit so that we try and center the, the combined road and kind of hybrid shoulder sidewalk a little bit better. So that, that will help balance that impact a little bit better than just putting a sidewalk. And then again, a lack of consistency even within those alternative, you're going to have spots where you have no grass area between the two. And then you're going to have areas where you have, you know, a full five-foot separation. So the sidewalk is going to wander within the corridor in this option, if, if that's important to you from an aesthetic standpoint. And here that looks something like this. We're, we're illustrating an area where you have a, just a narrow grass strip basically between the sidewalk and the roadway. Again, this would be in a, in a hill section where we're having to flatten out an area of the hill to create that area for the sidewalk to go. Right of way is obviously a, a consideration. Whatever we do is going to use up more of the public right of way. We did go back to some of our record drawings from, from years ago when, when some of the utilities were put in. We feel pretty confident that those are accurate. What you have is a full standard 66-foot right of way until you get to Interlock and, and then it, it necks down for whatever reason, probably because of the topography challenges, it, it necks down to a, a 50-foot right of way. But even that is, is going to be just about enough to do most of these options. We would anticipate some easements probably going to be required to do a full sidewalk option. Because we have a little more flexibility with the hybrid option, we can, we can try and design around that if we have property owners that, that are objectionable to that. And try to get by with just grading permits. We, we anticipate we will have some grading outside of that 66 and 50-foot current right of way. I would note that acquisition costs are so variable depending on the situation and the property owner that we, we didn't really try to take a stab at those. It's, it's really a crystal ball depending on the specific issues. So those aren't required. It would probably be good as we move forward to, to set up some kind of a budget to, to see what that's going to entail. Moving on to some, some non, there, there's still infrastructure to great degree, but these are other than, you know, building hard services. So we call them operational and ancillary items in the report. Speed bumps, you're, you're used to seeing on Park Street, just not this section of Park Street. The north section of Park Street has had them for years to, to mixed reviews. I would say to be diplomatic. I know there are people on both sides of that issue. Speed humps are basically flattened out, speed bumps, they're longer platforms that you would build that, that essentially do a, a similar thing without the jarring nature of the speed bump. Both of these options have, have limited value in controlling speed within a quarter. They, they will speed, slow people down at the speed bump itself, but people tend to speed right back up. Once you get, you know, 100 to 200 feet away from them. So they, they do have some value in controlling speed. It's, it's really community preference, whether that value is worth the, the negative that, that comes with them. A variation on both of those, kind of a newer concept is called speed cushions. Various manufacturers have come up with this system. The, the biggest difference here, it's, it's halfway in between a speed bump and a speed hump in terms of the geometry of it. The selling point, at least of this specific system, is that they, they put these in with some gaps in between where speeds for emergency services is, is important. That's the, that's the biggest difference that you see here. I would caution you against these necessarily because most drivers are going to do the same things that the emergency services do and get their wheels right in those gaps, which is not something that we, we want people to be doing. So these, these do have a, a use. I don't know that Park Street is the use for them. But again, to, to show you what the range of options that's out there, it's a, it's something to consider. Signage improvements, we, we have a, a variety of different things we can do. Far left there, you can see not necessarily standard signs, but you'll see throughout, throughout the state, various things that trying to bring drivers' attention to the speed limit, whether it's a strictly enforced sign or you see the traffic complaint area sign. The upper middle there, the bicycle sign, that's pointing out that the new standard for, for most of these signs is more of a fluorescent yellow. As we would do a road project here, I think it would be good to just revisit every sign in the corridor and, and probably replace it with, with one that's fluorescent in, in the the warning signs. They have a little bit more visibility and impact. And then the, the bottom right, it's, it's not one of wars, but I'm sure you recognize the, the driver feedback signs are becoming more and more common to see those. Those are great. You've got a couple of them in the corridor already. You could certainly add more. You have enough width, length there within the corridor to meet the spacing criteria for, for a few more of those. Rumble strips is, is something you'll commonly see on interstate highways and county roads, but, but it could be deployed in a situation like this as well. You'll see them deployed in, in a number of different configurations. Bottom middle there, you see that's more of a construction configuration where they're trying to warn people of upcoming construction. The, the left side is, is what you'll see on a lot of county roads these days to, to just warn drivers from crossing over the, the double yellow, the middle. Inattentiveness, head-on collisions, trying to prevent things like that. And then on the far right is what you see on a lot of interstate highways along the, the shoulder. Basically the same thing, trying to prevent drivers from drifting off the road. Basically, the same thing, trying to prevent drivers from drifting off the road. So this could be deployed if if you did a a shoulder widening project, you could deploy rumble strips. The one caution I would have is that those rumble strips are taking up real estate. Basically, you're you're kind of robbing Peter to save Paul. When when you add width to your shoulder, then, you know, no, no bicycle is is going to be able to use that that width that you put in your rumble strips. The other thing, the other disadvantage of them is is you have a brand new asphalt surface and now you're grinding it up with a series of rumble strips, which is a place for water pool and free saw and all the things that comes with that. So they they do tend to cause some premature deterioration of those areas. Law enforcement, obviously, it's it's something that you've you've taken on already, stepping up the the police presence in the corridor and and more of that can certainly be done. The the one note I had in the study is that through our road improvements, we could we could attempt to create some law enforcement to save their activities so that they have a little more flexibility in where they set up. And the last one here on the operational side is is clearing. Obviously, some clearing is going to be needed to do any of the infrastructure options that we talked about. But going beyond that in certain areas is is going to have a benefit both from site distance, giving people more of a place to refuge if if they do have, you know, multiple cars passing at once. Just a few photos of some of the areas that have some some brush growth that's obscuring either site distance or refugee areas or both. So shifting gears to the road. The one, the one option we looked at is patching some of the worst areas, probably on the order of ten to twenty percent of the pavement area. We were pretty aggressive with it. And then applying what's called a slurry seal to the to the surface. A slurry seal is much like a chip seal, but it's it's a little bit more well received in suburban and urban areas. You see a lot of chip seal on county roads where stones go flying and things like that. Chip seal or a slurry seal has a little bit finer aggregate and tends to not have that problem as much. It's it's a pretty low cost preventative maintenance strategy. The city has used it, not in the past few years, but going back a little further, you've you've used it on several city streets and and it's it's a maintenance option. So you're going to get a certain life out of it, but it comes with that lower cost.
John, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
This this is Garnet. So are you proposing that these road improvements be done in conjunction with one of the three options that you suggested?
That that is correct. It's it is, it's a bit of a cafeteria menu where you can pick either or on on both sides of the equation. But if if we're coming in here, you're going to have construction vehicles in here. You're just, you know, the road's not going to get any better than what it is. And it was already on our radar for needing improvement. Crushing shape is something that's familiar to the city as well. Just most recently in the Oval Beach parking lot and on Pyramid in recent years. This is one of the proposed solutions for the the north end of Park Street next spring. Basically, what we're doing is we're keeping that existing asphalt, but crushing it up and and adding it to our base material. So you're you're building strength for the road so that when you put new asphalt on it, hopefully doesn't look as bad as what this asphalt does in a similar timeframe. It has a little bit higher price tag, but I was actually a little surprised it wasn't more expensive than than the the first option there. There wasn't more of a difference between the two because it it does come with a brand new pavement in the twenty year design life for the pavement. Not to say that it's not going to crack and need some work in twenty years, but that's that's what we as engineers use as our time horizon when we look at pavement design. And it does offer, again, design flexibility. It does give us, since we're crushing up all of that old asphalt, we have the ability to do some grading and and move the road around a little bit within the right of way to to try and pair it with whatever option it goes with. Disadvantages, obviously, it's it's going to have a higher initial cost. Reduced maintenance costs certainly come with that though. And then because we're just crushing that asphalt and leaving it in place, the the road ends up being a few inches higher than what it is today. So that that's going to come with some challenges for tying driveways and things like that back in. Obviously, we we don't want to do anything with the road without at least thinking about what's underneath it. That tends to get neglected sometimes. So we we looked back at at what Cal Lake, what we've done for them in recent years. The the Water Main and Sanitary Sewer on Park Street, they're both constructed in the late seventies, part of the bigger city projects. Water system, as recently as I believe it was twenty fifteen, we did a pretty extensive capital improvement plan for the water system. Park Street wasn't on there. We noted, you know, several areas in the city that did have some frequent breaks and things like that. Park Street was not one of those. And then on the wastewater side, the asset management planning that was done with the Saw project for Cal Lake, identified a few manholes that that need to repair, not even necessarily replacement. And and that scope of work that's required could either be done as part of a road project or it could be done separate from a road project without really impacting either either project. Bottom line, estimated project cost not quite as rounded up. But here here's that menu. So across the the top there, you have either the patching and slurry seal option or the crush and shape option for the for the road improvements. And then along the left side, the rows are basically which of those three non-motorized options we're looking at. So anywhere from a million to to two million dollars, basically, to to improve to the level that we're improving. Obviously, if we were to go back and try and get some of those Astro compliant options, that that is going to go back to those projected costs that we had earlier on. So funding, we we obviously would love to get some outside funding. This one, Park Street is is unique in that putting an Astro compliant facility through here is just going to be really challenging. And that pretty much takes M dot funding off the table if if you can't do that. It it could certainly be done, but it comes with a cost, both the the dollars and the the environment. It's a critical dunes area, so anything we do has to get through Eagle and get their blessing. And they're going to urge us and and sometimes force us to stay as as narrow as possible. DNR trust fund does have more flexibility for us. If if we could pair this with other projects to get from the city limits all the way to Oval Beach, I think that would score pretty well if we could pair it with a Douglas project on their side to get all the way down to Center Street or beyond, that would be even more so. But DNR has has recently redone their scoring in the last couple of years. We found out with the Mount Bald Head application that we put in last year that they multiple times within that scoring system now have it weighted towards poor communities, which for better or worse, Sagatuck is not one of. So that that is probably a long shot unless we could really tie it into some regional things, which which is obviously going to increase the cost significantly. So local, local funding, I'm sure you've seen in the news, the interest rates are unprecedented, really. I'm not a financial advisor, but but looking at what's out there, you certainly got a great opportunity just to have all the control and still get a very, very attractive funding option to you. That's all I have in terms of study. I did toy with the idea of running through the at least the photos that are in our study and and Google has been kind enough in the past few years to drive Street View Park Street. So we can, we can do a virtual tour if if folks would like to. But I know you've had a full agenda and this is your second Zoom meeting, so I didn't want to go there right away.
Okay. All right, council questions?
I'll start, Ken.
Very examined, Mark.
Go ahead, Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, Mark.
Just for information, and John might be able to comment on this from at least a timing standpoint. We definitely are committed to North Arc Street next spring. We made that decision, I believe, at our last meeting or a meeting before that. And the other portion is that Douglas is close to having final documentation done on the Campbell Street project. I don't know, I think, John, you might have been involved in that a little bit. And from what I understand is they're pushing for a spring project date on that. So Campbell Road and Park Street couldn't be done simultaneously. South Park, at least, you couldn't, you know, do projects there. So that's just a, and if, John, you want to comment on that you might know more about than I do. It was just a post, Douglas Post Office talk, so.
Yeah, um, thanks, Mark. Good, good, uh, good segue. The, so our our, the city Sagatuck North Park Street project is is slated for next spring. And I think that makes all the sense in the world. I think when when we last met and we we decided to allow the contractor to delay till next spring, I mentioned that it it makes sense to build that section first, to improve that section first so that we don't have all that construction traffic going across this section of Park Street to access that one. It just saves us that many axles going over our new pavement. We we did apply on Campbell Road, we did apply with Douglas for a combined project for water main replacement and and road improvements all the way from Park Street to McVie, I think, was the end in the Douglas side there. We didn't get that. I was a little disappointed. I thought we had a really good application, but that would have been for twenty twenty one construction. Now, you as a city, Kirk had you budget to do that project with or without M dot funding. So I revisited our cost estimates and kind of took out some of the M dot bells and whistles that we needed to to make it attractive for funding and sent that on to Douglas. I don't know whether they have the funds available to do that project next year. They have been parallel process working on a project to deal with just the hill. Basically, three or four hundred feet from Park Street and and trying to dress the seepage out of the road. So that, Mark, you're exactly right. They they were planning on going ahead with that this fall, but I wouldn't be shocked if that ran into the spring.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Chris.
Uh, John, how much money then, if that project went off the table, how much money does that free up then for possibly South Park?
You have, I believe, three hundred thousand in your budget for the Campbell project.
And and remind me again, how much North Park is?
North Park, I want to say, was on the order of like a hundred and fifty thousand.
I, when we talked about this, as as Mark said at the last meeting, we did make the decision to do that since we'd already have the the people in place. But I specifically said I'd want to see what South Park comes in. And I appreciate all of the discussions about not trucks going over the new before we do the the north. But I still see, I still see South Park as as a bigger priority than Campbell and North Park.
In in terms of traffic, both both people in cars and people not in cars, you're exactly right. The it it's hard to even compare the two because just about everybody on Park Street is making that turn at Pyramid or going to Mount Bald Head. And the the North Park Street basically starts at that point at the north end of Mount Bald Head.
Any other questions?
I have one, another one for for John. You had, you briefly touched on acquisition costs. And you did not include that, but you said that might be have to be looked at if we further the project. Is that assuming we have to acquire land through some type of either negotiated price or eminent domain? And if so, would the shoulder option and the hybrid option exclude any acquisition costs?
It's hard to say definitively what what option's going to require what. We tried to at least narrow down that a little bit. I think the sidewalk option is going to need some easements. That's what I would envision that acquisition being. Hopefully, it wouldn't be an eminent domain issue. But but it it could, if you get a property owner that that simply doesn't want a sidewalk, that that could could be the case. The other two options, I would hope that we could avoid easements, but we might need some grading permits, just temporary grading permits to deal with some of the slopes and things like that.
Jane? You're muted.
While we're on that subject, how many homes are involved with acquisitions? And as you drive down Park Street, you see a lot of parking lots, places where people park their cars. And if we build this or when we build this, how much of a problem is that going to become where people don't have a place to park and they'll park on the road? I I don't know, I just thinking down the road, are we making another problem?
Yeah, that that's a great question. That in our in our photos, you can see we highlighted areas where where parking would be encroached on or really impacted more than that by one of these options. That's that's an impact that doesn't necessarily have a cost in terms of, you know, construction costs, but certainly has a cost in terms of lost parking or or whatever these folks are going to do. Certainly, there's there's a large area down right near Pyramid where it's it's basically perpendicular parking right off the road. But there are other properties along the way that that have very limited parking between them and the road.
Well, I'm wondering about that house that's right on the curve. I think it's four thirty four Park, where his driveway and all that stuff comes right up to the road. And it's, I would, I would think that would be a really difficult part to do something with. But also a real part that needs to be done because it's a blind curve. So I I'm just wondering, do we have to do something about the whole parking situation out there? Or are we going to end up with cars that are parked on the road, which that would be awful?
Yeah, we definitely don't want that. If I I can't remember the address, but I I definitely met one of the property owners who was out there as I was doing my walk through and we had a really good discussion. And he was one of the ones that had parking right on the road. And and he was, you know, all in favor of improving safety, but it it would be a pretty big hardship to to do like a full sidewalk option through his property.
Barry?
Thank you. Yep. This is just such a tough decision. I think we all agree we want to have safer pedestrian traffic and all that. These are the difficulties to achieve that. But in regards to Maple, no, Campbell Street, I, Campbell Street is a problem three hundred sixty five days a year. And there's some infrastructure that needs to be improved on Campbell. And I I would not be in favor of diverting away from that project. We just got to find a way to do it on Park Street, but we got to do Campbell Street. And there's going to be more discussion. We're not going to get anything done this year, but certainly as we move forward in the next weeks and months, this is going to be, I hope, something we talk about every time.
Any other question?
Mayor?
Well, we.
Um, yeah, I I just have have two comments. Thank you, John, for the report. And I'm anxious to hear what the Park Street residents have to say about these plans. And also, I have a continuing concern about the edges of Park Street. They're they're in disrepair and I just worry about liability to the city with people on bikes. If you do need to move over because there are two cars passing or multiple people, the edges of the road are very treacherous. So I really hope that we can come up with a solution and very interested to hear what people have to say that are directly impacted. And I'm very interested, um, to hear what people have to say that are directly impacted.
I can, uh, speak firsthand to that. I, I dove into the dune grass more than once during my, my, uh, walk up and down.
Yeah.
It's pretty dangerous.
Yes, indeed. Well, I think, uh, the comment was made, this is something we need to continue to look at on a regular basis. And, uh, I think we should, need to do that. Schedule a further discussion at our next workshop meeting for sure. Are there any other questions, comments about this?
Mr. Mayor?
Chris, Chris?
Following up on what, uh, Councilmember Leo said, is there, do we have the Park Street residents on any type of search that we can do a questionnaire? Or at least we can ask them to get back to City Hall with their, their thoughts on this now that the proposals are out there? I think that would be beneficial. Uh, I know that certain people think it should be done right away and certain people don't want to lose any of their property. So we have to weigh the concerns, but it'd be nice to get some input, uh, from the people along the road.
The question was, do we know the, the residents on that street?
Yeah.
I'm sure we could do that.
Yeah, I'm sure Cindy could generate a list from the tax rolls. That's a really good idea. I, I have a few anecdotes from people that, uh, saw me out there, um, looking at things, but that's, that's about it.
I think a survey of those people would be important.
For sure.
And, and Mayor?
Lully?
And John, speaking of surveys, uh, Jane Underwood has asked specifically, which I think is an excellent question, exactly the size of the road. How much is, uh, city right of way and how much is the actual road? So in this report, are, does it spell out? What's what?
Yeah, well, um, yes and no. It's, um, we, it both are variable. The right of way, uh, is sixty-six feet wide between, uh, Campbell Road and, and Interlocken. And then it narrows down to fifty feet wide, um, between Interlocken and Pyramid. Uh, we do not have a topographic survey. That's something that we certainly could do. And basically map out here is the exact position of the road in relation to the, the right of way. We have those old plans that, that are generally, um, accurate, I would say. But, uh, to really nail that down, we, we could certainly do, uh, survey work and, and answer those questions more definitively.
Just roughly, how much would something like that cost?
Um, full survey for the corridor, probably on the order of five to eight thousand would be my guess.
And is it possible to use the old maps or? What's your recommendation?
For whatever they're worth. When we went to design a new project, we would certainly include survey in that design. But if, if we wanted to look at specific areas, I could, I could pull out the old plans and, and, you know, at least get a rough guess on, on where the road sits in relation to the right of way.
Okay, because I think if we're going to start talking to people about what their choices are and what they feel the best option is, I think if we can, um, you know, if people understand where the city easement is and where the road is, that's a good place to start from.
Yeah, the, the, the easy thing to do would be to tell them, you know, i- in your specific area, the right of way is either fifty foot wide or sixty-six foot wide. So you could get a rough guess by, you know, measuring from the middle of the road, twenty-five or thirty-three feet. But the road isn't consistently in the center either. So that's, that's just going to be a proxy and that we could narrow it down a little bit with the existing plans. And then, then to go the, the whole way would need a, a full survey.
Okay, thank you.
Jane?
Well, if we're going to start talking land acquisitions and eminent domain and all that, we really need to know where that road lies and what belongs to who. I have a feeling that it's not real clear and I have a feeling that the road doesn't exactly follow where the road's supposed to be.
Barry?
Thank you. Um, right to your point, Jane. Whatever we do, we need to know where the road is. Uh, we have a very good indication from this study. But this is exactly what we did on North Park Street. Uh, there were rights of way issues there. Uh, it was a mess of old maps and, you know, property lines. And it, it took us quite a while to get that straightened out and to get everybody on board on North Park Street. So, you know, maybe after the next workshop, we can discuss, uh, or at the next workshop, moving forward with the survey. Uh, because that's going to be a starting point for anything that we do.
I'll just, I'll just add that, yeah, Barry, you're exactly right. This, this section is a little more straightforward than that one. That's, uh, even more unique than this. Um, and the other thing is that we're, we're approaching a really good window to do, uh, survey in an area that has a lot of trees. That, that window between the tree, uh, leaves dropping and the snow flying is, is generally a good time to do survey efficiently.
Mayor?
Yes, Lully.
Is, is there a reason, why don't we, why don't we just do it, make it an action item for Monday night? If we're going to be looking at leaves and falling and this is a good window, we can do it now as opposed to waiting until the next workshop.
Yeah, I support that. This is garnet.
I would support that too. I didn't want to be quite so pushy.
I have no problem.
Again, the, the survey, survey is a good idea. Maybe we just don't really need a bid on it. We just get a not to exceed, uh, dollar figure.
I'll pull together.
To our motion.
By Monday night.
Okay, good, good. You know, as part of any, uh, discussions of the plans going forward, we definitely need to bring in, our, our finance person, Peter, uh, to explain to us, one, how municipal funding, uh, works for projects such as this. Or what our available funding is going forward, or how much we've got committed to, uh, existing projects. This, we're, we're not talking chump change here. Uh, I, I, I highly doubt that we've got the funds available to do some of the high-end project, part of this project, but that's my own opinion. And we, we definitely have to go, you know, down that course. At the same time, we talk about, you know, plan, uh, options and preferences.
All right, John, so you'll have, uh, some information for us on Monday, uh, with regard to moving ahead with the survey.
Correct. Yep, we'll get it to you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Uh, I just have one, one last comment. Um, I hope that we can continue to have Allegiant County Sheriff have presence out there. I've heard from residents that that's fallen off a bit, so I just hope that we can continue that. I would ask, um, that continue on the weekends, um, as people are still headed, heading out to the beach.
Yeah, maybe we can ask Lieutenant Enfield to speak to that on Monday in his report.
Thank you.
Any other? Okay then, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Let's move along to the Christmas scape proposal. All right, Chris, I know you've been spearheading this. Would you like to lead up? You're muted.
Thanks. You've received, uh, two different proposals, uh, from Chip's ground cover regarding how to do the downtown Christmas lighting. The most recent one is the one we'll be working from. And, um, if, if, uh, Aaron can move us down to that. As you know, at the last meeting, we were going to do a Christmas committee, but there, in the, in lieu of the timeframe, we did not do a resolution to have an official committee. So it was the suggestion of people to, uh, do a little work, footwork, talk to other people about it and come up with a plan to come back to, uh, the city council. So in that time, I've had several meetings, uh, with different council members and people, as well as some, some of the other committee members from last year. And, and in essence, it comes down to three things we can do. The first is the proposal that Chip has, or that Chip's ground cover has right now for next, for this coming, uh, Christmas is eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. That is to do exactly what we did last year. And I, I think whether I'm speaking for myself or others, there was not a great deal of satisfaction with that. And for whatever reasons, that horse has left the station. So horses left the barn. Anyway, so what we're looking at then is the, how do we, how do we make it, um, acceptable and beautiful and those types of things? And I worked with Nick from Chips as we did with other people.
Chris, Nick is with us tonight, so.
Yes, he is. Uh, he was extremely easy to work with and he came back with some proposals. The second, uh, the, uh, the second part of the proposal would be to add, I believe, forty thousand lights. Um, and what we looked at was, you have to remember, there's a ten-foot, um, wrap around the power lines that you cannot have a workman get in there to do that unless they are a licensed electrician, linesman. And so when you look at the, the pictures that it showed, that bright yellow line running down the streets, those are where the power lines are. So what we would have is one street would have a power line on the right side, the next street would have the power line on the left side. So the first proposal Nick came up with was to show, to walk through and we could either do a branch wrap, a canopy wrap, obviously the trunk wrap, or a combination of three. And to pick out the trees that we could put the most lights on to get the biggest bank. So after some discussion with other people, uh, we suggested that Nick see if he can get ahold of a linesman who would be able to go up, work along with his folks, uh, or after they were done and make it so that it's all even from, uh, Culver Street all the way down to, I believe, the post office. And that's what that second proposal is. Nick and his group would be able to have all of their work done by Thanksgiving. The linesman, it will depend a little bit on his, um, schedule, but the goal is to get everything done by Thanksgiving. So if you look at the proposal, I believe it's twenty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. We have fourteen thousand, five hundred in the budget right now for that. Uh, we don't have any donations yet and I believe there are still maybe one or two thousand left over. So what we would be looking at would be a budget amendment to add on whatever it costs. I believe it's around six thousand dollars to get us from doing the exact same thing we did last year, eleven thousand, up to the two new items at the bottom that he has split out, what he, his group will do and what the linesman will do. That's about an additional six thousand dollars to the budget amendment. Now, we have not gotten any donations. There were donations last year. Last year, we spent twelve, nine for chips, fourteen hundred for the city wreaths, and then seven thousand for, um, electrical updates. So, um, that seven thousand, we're never have to do that again. When you, when you look at what we're adding on, we're adding an additional, at least ten more trees that would have the canopy. So the hope is that the effect will be just like it used to be. Uh, as you come around, come down Culver and go around the curve and you'll have that big, uh, beautiful blast of Christmas light. And that's where we're at.
Go ahead, Chris.
Nick, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, can everybody hear me? Okay, great. Um, yeah, I think Chris did a very good job summarizing where we're at, so I appreciate that. The, the next step, if we want to go ahead and add new items, it, we're not able to do all, every single tree. Not every single tree will hold the lights in the canopy, so we'd have to, we'd have to pick and choose what trees we're going to do. But, um, I just want to make that clear, I guess, that not every tree necessarily will be perfectly even. It's not going to be a one hundred percent even throughout, um, throughout downtown display, but we'll do the best that we can to even everything, everything else.
Okay, questions? Okay, Chris, next steps?
Uh, what I'd like to do is have this on the, a Monday night agenda for a budget amendment so that we can do, uh, both new items two and three, which will add ten thousand lights that Nick and his group, Chips will do, and then an additional ten thousand, uh, that the new linesman would do. Total of about six thousand, ten dollars.
Which we, if we got contributions or other funding, um, that would, that would reduce that number, right?
That would take care of it.
Yep.
So if anybody's out there that'd like to donate, feel free.
Yes. Okay, thank you for your, uh, hard work and, and Nick, we appreciate your, uh, flexibility in coming back and giving us a proposal that looks pretty good to me.
Thanks.
All right. All right, next we're going to move to a public comment section again on public comment on any item. And I, I'd like to review the, uh, council's rules of order a bit because it, this isn't me, uh, enforcing some kind of discussion, uh, process on you. We have in our rules of order, um, a specific, uh, item addressing the public count, count, public comment section. It says, a person's addressing the council, excuse me, shall state their name and home address. Remarks should be addressed to the presiding officer in a courteous manner and not single out or argue with any person. Comments or criticism of the operation of an office or on a particular topic is permitted, but no person shall have the right to speak more than once on any particular subject until all other persons wishing to be heard have had the opportunity to speak. We've been kind of maybe loosened in enforcing those rules, but as I say, they're not my rules. They're the council's rules of operation. So with that, I'll open this up for public comment. If you wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself and, uh, volunteer your name and address and please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm Lauren Lanigan. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for jumping the gun earlier.
Okay.
I, I live, uh,
Will you reside, please?
I reside in, along Lecture Drive in Finville. I own property and pay taxes in Sagatuck. And I own several businesses in Douglas.
Thank you.
And so my comment was about being characterized by a couple of the, uh, members of the council, yourself included, in your league of.
All right, right, right there, you've just stepped on our rules of operation. Would you please, uh, limit your criticism to an office or a, uh, a action that was taken, but not directed at an individual?
Well, you said direct it to the person in charge and that's you.
Yeah.
So I'm objecting, but in the videos, we won't name who they are, uh, to being characterized as an outsider who's somehow trying to take over the election. And since two of those members are here, I'm going to comment on it. I am not an outsider. I mean, that is the kind of siloed thinking that has gotten me so engaged when I've never been engaged in sixteen years in terms of coming to these meetings. And, and the reason I got engaged was with the pandemic and COVID and we had so many problems with our businesses. I stepped up. I was part of a group. I actually led the Safety and Sanitation Committee. We had a couple of Zoom videos with over a hundred people, many from Sagatuck in the community. I put together a cross-functional team of business owners from restaurants, lodging and retail in Sagatuck, Douglas and Finville to come together to what would be the protocols that we could do that would help our businesses open safely. Because I knew that if people felt safe, they would come and visit and our businesses desperately needed that. So I stepped up because I said, this is such a siloed community. There's all these different, three little towns that have different governments of Sagatuck. We have different, uh, commercial districts and, uh, convention business, but they weren't all coming together. So we made a grassroots movement to come together. And so I'm all about collaboration. That's why I'm excited about the new candidates running who are very collaborative. But I react to being called an outsider. I think I'm an activist. I'm passionate about our community. This is ground zero where people are getting sick. Our businesses have been suffering. But because of collaboration that we were able to do on our, uh, committee, we did have, we're successful in getting a lot of masks worn. We got good local, state and national publicity and there's more traffic. And some businesses of folks I know who also don't live in Sagatuck but own their businesses there, they're doing better than last year. And they.
Thirty-second warning.
They actually say safety and sanitation was the reason. So I am passionate about solving our community. It's ground zero and I'm passionate about bringing in collaborative change. And I never met any of them except Todd Hoskins until last Saturday when I helped with the literature drop. So I'm certainly no elections spin golly, but thank you for, uh, letting me speak.
Thank you. And I do appreciate your efforts. You know, I was a, a part of the group that met here in Sagatuck to invent the pop-up, uh, patios and, and, I mean, they, we've had excellent results with that. That's terrific. Dan, you're, Dan Fox?
Yeah, I, just a very quick one. I.
Oh, Dan, uh, just to be consistent, would you give your name and address?
Dan Fox, uh, we used to not have to give our house address to not be subjected to egg throwing.
Just tell me where you reside. Just tell them where you reside.
Sagatuck City, sorry. I've seen him do it multiple times before on multiple important, different projects. And I just wanted to compliment John Moxie and, and that firm on the quality of what they provide to support your consideration and decision-making regarding engineering projects. Honestly, it just strikes me as absolutely first class, so that's it. Good job, John. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Jane?
Yes, I want to thank the council because this Park Street is a very challenging project. I do not have land on Park Street. My address is 130 Perryman Street, although I enter my cottage through Park Street. I would hope that none of my neighbors and friends along Park Street would be contentious about this. This is a safety issue. And we have to look for the greater good here. The city has to establish what property is, belongs to the city. I was talking to a council member earlier. And many houses and buildings in Sagatuck, and I would assume in many old towns, possibly infringe on other people's property or on city property. But this is a safety issue, and I would hope that everyone would understand that. Good luck. We have lots of things to think about and you have lots of things to decide on.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Mr. Medler?
Yes, I'd like to comment on the Park Street non-motorized study. I live at 462 and Vine Street, which is off of Park Street. I've had my summer cottage here for going on 40 years. Park Street is summertime extremely dangerous. There are several things not covered by the Moxie Plan that the city could consider and plan for and be creative about. Placing all, I work with the post office and placing all of the post office boxes on one side of the street require all of the landscapers who park directly alongside or impinge on Park Street during the daytime to not park there or park on the properties on which they're serving. There are several sections of park from Campbell to Perryman, which are easily converted into some sort of sidewalk bike lane. And you have to consider the fact that Park Street is the entry to Oval Beach and access to one of the attractions the city offers. And no improvements have been done to that entryway for decades. And any effort, whether it be piecemeal or in whole, should be attempted. When people rebuild on Park Street or remodel on Park Street, those are the times to negotiate use of their land and coordinate establishment of a sidewalk or a bike lane. I don't think bumper strips or those sorts of things are going to work. And I don't think border walls between the bike lane and the street itself. People have landscaped all the way up to the pavement. And those people, you know, are not going to be happy with that. And a lot of people are using the easement for their parking to their homes, which are very close to the street. So there are other creative issues that the city could address to make Park Street safer. That might not cost the additional funds that would help make Park Street safer and a more attractive.
30-second warning.
Place. Because the non-motorized people, it's going to increase over time. It's not going to decrease.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? Let me go to Dan Fox first and then we can come, we can come back and catch you again, Medler.
Okay.
Oh, you weren't. Okay. If no one else wishes to speak, we can go back and hear more from Mr. Medler. Go ahead.
My comment is on the Lake Michigan frontage obstacles. And I've sent a letter. I did send the letter to Jane Verplank. I used the email address as listed on the city's website and I got confirmation it was delivered. The only email address listed on the city website that didn't work was Mr. Truster's. And so I had to ask the city clerk to, to forward that. I think all of you should take the time to read the letter carefully. The city has standing under my settlement documents. And Eagle was subject to the same terms and conditions of those settlement documents. And those terms and conditions in my settlement documents were deed, covenants, and restrictions which ran through the land on dune grass. And when I viewed, after reviewing these opinion letters as to the interruption of the people using the beach, I took a look from the lake. And it's clear, and when I went through my settlement agreements, that no effort has been made by the city, Dune Ridge, or Dune Grass, or Eagle to comply with settlement agreement. You clearly have the authority under my settle agreements to enforce those terms and conditions. And my letter speaks for myself, for itself. And I suggest you take it wholeheartedly because the city and its inaction has put itself at substantial risk. Thank you.
Thank you. We do take that seriously. Anyone else wish to make a comment? All right, hearing none, we'll go to council comments. See, Holly?
None at the time.
Okay. Jane?
I just want to say that Chris Peterson and I and Jen Davenport sat with Cindy and wrote the pop-up patio ordinance together. We collaborated on that. We met with Culver Street Restaurants and helped them open up pop-up patios. And so I guess the new people aren't the only ones that collaborate. And I do take offense to that remark.
Chris?
Yes, first of all, again, I want to thank Nick for the, the job. We were, we walked at least three or four times with a variety of different people. I definitely still am in favor of Park Street South and getting rid of the weeds and having the best Christmas lights this Christmas. That's all.
Thanks. Mark?
All set, Ken. Thank you.
Garnet?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Sorry about that. Just wanted to give everybody an update on the recycling survey. As of yesterday, we had gotten 519 respondents from residents and 33 responses from business owners. I asked, I turned around and asked the CBB and Sadaba to repost requests for folks, especially the business owners, to respond. And, and also asked the city managers and the township manager to repost as well, which they did right away. Our plans are to start, do that data analysis the week of October the 2nd. So I'd had it on my list to shut down that survey on Friday, but I think I'll, I'll leave it open a little bit longer and then commence with the data analysis the second, with the hopes of getting a drafts report, if you will, to the committee by the night. So that's, that's where we are. It's been a good response on the residence part. Little tougher on the business part, and I, I know they've been distracted with, with work. So we'll keep plugging away. That's it.
Mark? Mute.
I'm all set.
Yuri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we've made some progress for some issues. It's never fast enough. But, you know, we got through Park Street this year. No fatalities or serious injuries that I'm aware of. That doesn't excuse anything, but we got through a year. But we're moving forward with the survey. So as we plan further, we're going to know more what we're doing. I'm very happy about that. The dune grass resolution to the judge, this is something we can do now. I'm glad to see we're all in agreement with that. And I had one note on recycling. There was some confusion in Sagatuck regarding the schedule for recycling pickup. Apparently, many people, myself included, printed the original schedule that only went to the pickup as September 14th. So it just dropped off. On September 21st, there were many blue bins in the street. I put mine out because I didn't know. But they weren't picked up because it wasn't a pickup day. I contacted Garnet to discuss, but I was named, not able to get ahold of her. So I called our contact at Republic, Jack Brown. I promptly received a complete 2020 schedule. I'm attaching that to an email and sending it to everybody. And perhaps our staff can post that on our website. Jack indicated that they will finalize the 2021 schedule sometime next month. And I also mentioned to Jack that there was a statement made that Republic only recycles cardboard. He confirmed that Republic continues to recycle plastic metal and paper as well as, as well as cardboard. They accept glass, but they, there is no market for glass. But it's still separated, crushed. Some is used for secondary application. And the rest of us move to the landfill, but they still accept it and take, take it care of it for us. I believe there's already a link on the city's website that'll take you to the Republic site with the recycling page. But I'm sending this schedule out and perhaps we can post that as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I would just observe that the, there was a sign on our dumpster, Republic dumpster, that says cardboard only. Maybe that's why Garnet had that, that comment. So we need to fix that if that's not the case.
Yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll jump in here just because for clarification. We can go back to that video and I'd be happy to share it with anybody with, where they said specifically it was cardboard. So this is the question and the confusion that everybody endures, whether they're a business owner or a resident. What does Republic really do? And that's why we're asking folks via survey. So let's stay tuned and see what people have to say. Thank you.
Jane?
So Barry, could you also post what they recycle and what they don't recycle?
Yes.
Okay. I just have a comment that we received a request from one of our citizens about, about city council making a rule or standing or at least advisory to people on trick-or-treating on Halloween. He was feeling that it could be very dangerous to have kids out on the street or getting, going to house to house and getting their goodies. I'm not sure the city has a role in that, but think about it. We could certainly send out an advisory or maybe something a little bit stronger. But I just put that on the table. We can think about what we should do, if anything, about that. So thank you all for your patience. It's been a long meeting, but I think a very productive one. So I thank you all for contributing. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Verplank?
Moved by Verplank, seconded by Chris, that we adjourn. We have to do a roll call vote. Erin?
Verplank?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.